I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for its standings, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing tonight at this time. At this time, I will open up the meeting to the public on the public hearing. Anybody who wants to comment on local law, law of sewer use law, for the Governor Ross's point. If no one wants to make comment, I close the public hearing. Comments from the public at this time. Open the meeting for comments from the public. There be no one to comment at this time, I close this part, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of January 7th, and special meeting of January 12th. You all have copies, is there any additions or deletions?
Make a motion to accept the minutes I've written?
Second. Motion made in seconded. Any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, bills.
Make a motion to accept the decision.
Thank you.
Make the motion to pay the bills. Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
First piece of correspondence you have tonight is from the community link. It's regarding their health fair, which they wish to hold here at the civic center on April 13th. I've talked to Michael Bryan, and he has no problem with this, would the board approve this? That's where the bus is out in front and all the other exams are held in this room.
We've done that in the past.
Yes, we have.
Make a motion over that to the community link.
Right there. Motion made in seconded, any discussion? There be no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I have a letter which arrived just to me. It came on certified return receipt requested. It is from Dolly's. We are proposing to the state liquor authority plans to move the current restrooms to the southwest corner of the building, and add approximately 18 feet to the existing bar. We are required by control law, section 64 subdivision 2A, to notify you by certified mail. Thank you very much. This requires no action by the board. We have another letter which is addressed to Police Chief Robert Craig. Dear Chief Greg, I am writing this letter to inform you of the resignation of my position as a police officer with the Ross's Point Police Department effective January 27th, 2002. I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank both yourself and the village board as a whole for the many opportunities and courtesy that were bestowed upon me during the term of my employment with this department. In closing, I would, I'd like to wish both the Ross's Point Police Department and its members a prosperous future. Sincerely, Christopher Mady.
I need a motion to accept that.
Make the motion to accept this.
I'll second that, right? Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Bob next, because he's going to work for the Board of Control, right?
No, he's leading the city police.
Okay. Any other discussion? There be no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all we've got.
Reports of mayor and trustees. I have a discussion on the property being annexed into the village, which is the heiress property that was donated to us. We do have, and we are receiving the letter from mayor saying that we have no objection. And I need a motion from the board to send to heiress that we will honor the New York State Electric and Gas franchise for gas. Motion made in seconded, any other discussion?
So what needs to happen during, we send, we send them a letter saying we will honor?
Yeah.
The gas.
Well, we have already done that, I think in a previous meeting, but I don't think there was a motion covering it.
Okay.
And so that's what I'm trying to do.
We sent one to NYSEC, we never sent one to the.
Yeah, I think we sent it to NYSEC, that we said that we honor NYSEC, and then we never sent it to heiress.
And so when they get that, then they?
No, they already done it, they already written the letter, they're just asking that we.
Just for their own record.
So our letter is going to the town, and should be just a matter of formality.
George, are we just gonna, are they gonna use that for heat, or what's?
They, yeah, they've had gas right along, and they use it for the boilers. They've had it since, oh my god, five years. And it's just that, if property that we're annexing includes heiress's gas house, that little house they built, and we have no franchise for gas, electric for gas in the village. So all we're saying is that we honor that franchise that's there.
Formality.
Yeah, just a formality. I have a motion made in seconded, any other discussion? There be no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me, Trusty Menard.
My first item on the agenda is a report, the building permits issued in 2001. We were quite busy in 2001. We issued, the total building permits were 50, and the total demolition permits issued was nine. We had a new single family home dwelling, there was 12 new ones, for a proximate total of 1.3 million dollars. And the rest is just additions to houses and unbeknownst, but looks like we've got a lot of tax revenue from the, we had to build.
Is this an above-average year?
It's average. In the last two years, we're growing, so that's good.
My second item is an attendance to the MEUA engineering workshop, which will be held February 20th and 21st at the Electronic Parkway in Liverpool. I'd like to make a motion that we send Timmy and Brian to this workshop.
I'd like to second that.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? There be no such, and all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
My third item is a discussion of the future plans for the underground electric. I believe everybody has a copy of Bobby's report. What it's gonna cost us to finish putting the underground in. We have Maple Street, Liberty Street, Clinton Street, heiress road to the substation, Pine Street, Bay Shore Drive, and the Boyer project. The total figure for this, Bobby did a lot of work on this to get all the materials and everything. We're looking at a total project cost of 1.2 million dollars. And right now, we're looking at another 1.5 million dollars to upgrade our substation. So it was the feeling of the superintendent that we go out for a loan for this, combine it all together, the 1.5 million that we need in the upgrade, and go out bid for, or go out to get a loan for this whole total, for the 1.5 and 1.2 million, and then we can finish up our underground project.
That only takes us through till 2002. The object of doing this, talking about it, is that we definitely can't afford to take it right out of the electrical fund of 1.2 million dollars. We do have some money in reserve towards this project, approximately 700,000. So by doing it this way, then after this is done, the other smaller streets can be taken right out of the electrical fund and continue to finally hopefully someday see the end of this project. But there's no way that we can take this out of the electrical fund without raising rates, and that's what we don't want to do.
I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's an investment, so it's something we have to complete.
It isn't, it isn't, the underground is, we all realize the benefit, but the substation, it's a necessity, that has to be done.
The substation, we have to go out to, we have to go out to.
For George?
I mean, we have no choice on that, that has to be upgraded. And what Bobby's proposing is to do it all at once.
We can get municipal bonds for this, can't we?
Yeah, I think that's something you should talk at budget time, with the project, with the finance and then. You're talking about, you said the project is only good for this calendar year?
No, 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 no.
Is that 1.2 million?
Yeah, the next two years, next two years.
And we actually can get all that worked on in the next two years?
Oh, yeah, what we intend to do, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta take a look, Maple Street, Liberty, Clinton, Pine Street, those streets right there are all gonna be done under the sewer project when we tear up the street next year with the sewer line. So all we're gonna do is the piping there. There's no cabling gonna get run next year, or this year. I'm sorry, I keep saying next year. Bay Shore Drive, which is Eddie's up here, we've got to be able to do this year, but that's gonna, I think most of that's gonna be done by an outside contractor. Most of that's gonna be put in, the water, the sewer's gonna be put in by an outside contractor, no cost to us. At the same time, it's all we gotta do is lay the pipe. That's a very small job to do. So all we're gonna do is lay the pipes.
Cost of the pipe.
And it's, in the Boyer project, that is the extension of where he is from now over into the other areas. Everything else on this end is done.
These figures are just for the conduit?
It's just, this year is just for the conduit.
So that doesn't include the wiring?
No, but that, we're not gonna do the wiring this year.
That doesn't, I thought Bobby said that doesn't include.
Maybe it does, but I'm not sure. I wish he was here.
That's a, that's a big thing, but here.
Yes, I believe it does, doesn't include the wire.
I wish he was here to explain that.
He said he was gonna come, but I don't know, something happened, right?
He said he's got it all.
We can discuss that at budget time, because obviously, budget's on the budgets, right?
Yeah, but I mean, it's, what we're trying to do right now is get a heads up. What Bobby intended to do is get a heads up on this, because between the amount of pipe that we need for this job and want to bid now. It gets, because, well, here it is, what? Just about the end of January, and he's looking at lead time getting this stuff in here. And we're hoping that the engineering firm of Tisdale is ready to go spraying with that sewer line.
Yeah, we're gonna start putting some piping down at the same time.
So this is 2002, 2003?
Right. And then after that, we shouldn't have to bond anymore after that.
No, it's a good idea. So we wanna do, we wanna just postpone this, don't make.
Well, we can postpone it to.
About more of it.
Yeah, to get all our figures.
The figures are here.
Yeah, right.
It's what we gotta do, we gotta make up our mind, we gotta bond this, there's no two ways about it. Like our son says, it still has to go in a budget.
Right.
Because you gotta show that money going through there somewhere.
But we can, we'll get more figures. I'm all positive of what our son said, that is the wire, that's everything.
Well, that would make more sense.
Right. Okay. My next item is a discussion on the CPR reports.
CPR records, yeah.
CPR records. Bobby's been going through these records for electrical. And all he's looking for right now, he wants to contact a few people to look into a better way of doing these records, to keeping these records, to see if there's another, another way that we can do it. He's just gonna get some feelers out there, and he just wanted the board to know, you know, wanted their approval to go out and research it a little bit more.
I don't have a problem with it, I don't help the rest of the board, I mean, we can get more efficient. Did that, that system on the UAR? Yeah, I got a call in today to Mr. Malane, but he returned my call, but he wasn't, I wasn't there, and he said he wasn't gonna be there, so I'll call him again tomorrow.
So just, basically, just a heads up from Bobby, just gonna look into that, into a better way of handling the reports. My next item is the annual police report, which I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Craig.
You all have copies of the report that I gave you, so just to give the board an idea of the annual statistics and our productivity throughout the year 2001. There was a total of 818 complaints that were handled throughout the year, resulting in a total of 90 arrests. There was a total of 346 uniform traffic tickets issued, and 37 parking tickets issued. The department conducted a total of 338 investigations, and I'm happy to say with a 90% successful closure rate, there's approximately 30 cases that will roll over into this year, and that is usually what it is from year to year. You'll have cases that will roll over because of different reasons, they weren't able to be closed, but the investigations are still continuing. There was a total of 186 public service assistance responses, which, that would be made up of your assist to other agencies, your property checks, vehicle unlocks, civilian transports, this type of thing. From the total of 90 arrests, there were 42 that were the result of vehicle traffic stops, the other 48 were the result of complaints. And again, I'm happy to report that we kept the T's crossed and the I's dotted. We maintained a 100% conviction rate on all arrests in 2001. There were a total of just some traffic-related information. There were a total of 784 traffic stops that were conducted by the officers. Those stops resulting, and again, 346 traffic tickets issued, but 467 warnings issued. Just so we don't live up to the reputation sometimes we have, that everybody gets written, they get stopped. There were 467 warnings issued. Of the 784 traffic stops, again, 42 arrests were noted from the traffic stops. And something else that was worth noting, there were 26 designated drivers that were found throughout these traffic stops. And of the 26, or there were 26 designated drivers, and there was seven DWI arrests. So you had a total of 33 vehicle traffic stops where alcohol was present, resulting in only seven DWI arrests, and the other 26 had designated drivers. So that's a very good sign for the safety of the community and the safety of the users of the highway. It wasn't that many years ago when those two figures were reversed, where the DWI arrests would have been 26, and the designated drivers would have been 26. That's a very good sign. And the officers noted that they logged a total of 28,511 patrol miles on the two marked patrol vehicles. And that'll conclude that annual statistic report.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, it's a natural border, thank you.
Good record.
My next item is a discussion on parking at the boat ramp, Academy and Maple Streets. I will also turn this over to Bobby.
Mayor Rivers had spoke to me a couple weeks ago regarding the parking issue again at the boat launch. And it's something that the board needs to, needs to take a look at again before the voting season comes upon us. One of the problems that we had last year were vehicles parking overnight, being left there from day to day. And there are signs down at the same overnight parking. The village code, there's a section of the village code that refers to the parking in the boat repair area. I've attached a copy for you to review. And the only thing that the village code says about it is that a permit is needed. But a couple, three years ago, I'm not sure if that could, wait, come up with the right time. A trustee dupra, we had this problem, has suggested that we waive the, waive the permit at that point and see how it goes. And I don't think for the last two, three years that it has gone very bad, other than some isolated complaints or isolated incidents where somebody didn't park their vehicle quite right, and it may, it hindered other users of getting in and out of there. But I think if that place was paved and marked with some clear markings for boaters to park, I think that would alleviate that problem. And the overnight parking, my recommendation would be, everybody's definition of overnight parking can be different. Somebody goes down and they spend an evening or a little while on a boat, they leave at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning. To them, they didn't stay overnight, they left at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning. I think if you looked at it, maybe changed the code, or implemented a no parking, and set the hours from midnight to 5:00 a.m., something along those lines, and up the fine. Right now, the fine for parking overnight down there is $15. And I've had a lot of people tell me, that's pretty cheap to have a place to park their car with a police watching. You know, so, and if you substantially increase that, you may, you may hinder or alleviate that problem. So something to think about.
I think there's a problem, people parking there all night, wanting to block the boat ramp. That's what I think Mark was saying. There is, there is. I have been down there, Brian, I went down there, but on Sunday this year, there was a little foreign car parked, dead middle of the parking lot, so it affected everything that happened in there, but a canvas over there, and was there all weekend. That's not right.
No, no.
But that's what he's saying, is that if they're parked right, and they don't block the, block the way.
The guy drives in, he sees a spot there, and there's nobody there, parks it, covers it up, goes on a boat and down for the weekend.
And you gotta remember, these people are in town, they're spending money, so we don't want to drive them away.
Brian, Lighthouse Point Marina has got plenty of parking for all their boaters and their customers coming in there. There's no reason why they can't park over there, it's just damn laziness. They want to be right next to where they can, you know, jump off and go. And I'm not trying to pick on the guy, I'm just stating a fact. It's, I don't have heartburn, somebody wants to go to a restaurant, park there, I'd send this right along. The parking lot's full, they park there, and they're there for a couple hours, they're gone. I don't have heartburn for that. But when they take and park cars all weekend, and I've seen them time and time again, taking spots, it's not right.
The only way we're gonna stop that is, like you said.
That's it.
Put a restriction there, either 1:00, midnight, whatever, to 5:00 in the morning. And you said, like, you can ticket them, put a $50 charge on it, or whatever.
Or tow one or two of the cars away.
Or put a, that's right, if you put a sign, it equals tow to the owner's expense, then it gives us the authority to tow them. And if you tow one, that's all you have to do.
How is it currently signed, Bob?
No overnight parking.
That's it?
Yes, it says no overnight parking.
We can change it.
I think it would alleviate the problem if it was changed, and we'd be. Again, it's nothing that has to be done right away, but before we know it, the voting season will be here.
And do you think that this law should be amended, though? Because when this was waived three years ago.
It was never amended.
It was waived for one year, the board revisited at the end of the year, waived it again, which really, if you're going to continue to do that, you should alter this law.
Yeah, well, it's one of the things that's gotta be done in here too, so I will do them all at once.
Is this currently correct, though, or are permits still waived?
Well, we've never issued any.
I think we haven't issued any. Are permits are still waived, they have been for years.
Okay, continue on your recommendations.
Okay, on the parking recommendations, we have, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that we have noted a problem on Academy Street, between Maple and White on the north side. That is, three-hour parking as per the village code. And we have been issuing tickets, we've been issuing tickets for vehicles that are blocking driveways for the residents there. It's been causing a problem. Academy Street is a designated truck route. Therefore, when you start parking cars there, this time of the year, especially with the snowbank, you're limiting it to one-way traffic. I've had complaints from the bus drivers, making that turn back and forth is difficult. I've had complaints from Yatharists, asking for additional enforcement, if we could do enforcement there to ticket the people, because they supply parking in their parking lots, and the people shouldn't be parking there. So in view of this, and looking at the situation, if you had fire trucks, ambulance that had to get down through there, you've got one-way limited traffic. My suggestion to that, that area would be, if the board would consider making that a no parking anytime. That way, it keeps it open for the truck route, keeps it open for, open for the buses and the traffic on that, on that stretch of street. And I think we'll alleviate the problem and keep the people parking where they should park. That's another recommendation that I wanted to do off of.
You know John for years, that parking, the people from heiress, so.
Yeah, some of the employees.
All the employees.
Or people, visitors, going, salesmen, whatever.
Now, they have the visitor parking lot just across from the school, which could be used, I would think, for the visitors or salesmen or. And also, I took it, just looking at this step further, on Academy Street, right, or on Maple Street, I'm sorry, right in front of Wyatt Beach, on the west side of Maple Street, there's a 200-foot section from Academy Street, 200 feet north. Where they can park. They can pull up, the salesmen can park, people can, a lot of times you'll see the pine mortar vans, telephone vans, you hear people, they park there. I don't see a problem with that, that hasn't been a problem with us. The other side of the street, the east side now of Maple Street, from Academy all the way down to Earl Street, is no parking with the exception of handicap. So if we did some signage on the east side indicating handicap parking only, that might be beneficial to some handicapped individuals and. But I think we need to take a look at that, because the complaints have been increasing over the last few months in that Academy Street parking lot.
Is that it, Bob?
Yes.
If we're gonna do all these things, I would suggest that we do them all at once, because we have to change the local laws. And of course, that's going to, several changes at different times. It's up to the board to make that decision, which really, I don't know. I had asked Bob, like I said, two or three months ago, three months ago, weeks ago, to look at this situation, because everyone's allowed to crop up and come up with recommendations, so he's made his recommendations. Ladies and gentlemen, whatever you want to do, now at this point.
What do we, now, what do we want to do with the boat one? Do we want to go midnight to 5:00 a.m.? I mean, we pretty much have to set our hours, do we want to go 1:00 to 5:00 a.m.?
The time does the restaurant close, that we're using the clock?
Late on the weekends. Yeah, but that's, but that's mostly bar.
Yeah, that's mostly, that's on.
Restaurant.
Restaurant.
10:00 or 11:00.
11:00 to 5:00.
Well, the only thing is.
11:00 to 5:00, whatever.
I wouldn't go any earlier than midnight. I mean, you have, you have a lot of people on each night that are out there on their boats, and sometimes it's midnight or 11:00 before they get back in.
So that applies to everybody, John.
Right.
Well, even, I mean, it doesn't really matter what hour we put, all that we're looking at is not overnight parking. I mean, if we put two hours on there, it doesn't make any difference. So I mean, if we go 1:00 to 5:00, it's gonna eliminate the overnight parking. Basically, that's all we want to do.
Yeah, I wouldn't go any later in the morning than 5:00, because like.
Right, some people go out early.
1:30, you get a lot of fish on that.
Right.
And hopefully, this year, with the grant money, we might get that paved.
If that was paved and marked, I think that would alleviate a lot of the problems.
See, one of the problems in paving that was, we didn't want to really spend too much money there, because the alcohol line would be right underneath the middle of that parking lot, excuse me, parking lot. And we are going to be putting in a new alcohol line.
Is there anything available that we could inexpensively mark it on the gravel, that would stay?
I don't, I don't think so.
You spray it.
But they have, the gravel's gone, and then that's gone.
May I make a suggestion? I've seen it done in the past in different locations, where you have restricted parking, and you don't want 24 hours a day. In actuality, all you have to do is bar traffic for an hour, stay between 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. If you bar that parking between 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning, nobody can park 24 hours a day.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't matter, yeah, even if we eliminate it for an hour or two hours, it's gonna stop the overnight parking. People aren't gonna be able to park there for a weekend, you can ticket them.
And you gotta put it bottom, though, it can be towed at owner's expense.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so then if you tow one or two vehicles.
Take what you write down right along.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I'll make the motion that. Okay, I'll make the motion that we change the hours for our parking at the boat launch from, you can park there except for the hours between two and four AM in the morning. And I'd also like to continue the motion with no parking on Academy Street, from Maple Street to Lake Street.
On the north side.
On the north side.
The south side is no parking.
Why don't we just put in there, no parking at all on Academy Street? And that, that's.
Eliminate it.
Do we have a problem, though, with the residents, is that going to cause a problem? Let's suppose someone has a family reunion or something, is there?
I've never had a problem with the residents on the street.
But how do we distinguish between someone who's visiting a resident and needs to park on the street?
We distinguish that, we, I've done this for years. Summertime, they get, people get relatives that come and visit, you notice an out-of-state plate or a plate parked in front of a car, or in front of a house, I usually call, I'll call a resident, I'll stop by, ask him if that car belongs to that house, and if you see somebody visiting, or, so, we all work certain things like that, you have to. But trying to keep the street free from parked cars, the majority of the time, is what we're, the goal would be.
But the cars that you're seeing there now, Bob, are repeat offenders, in other words, it's the same cars there, week after week after week?
Well, yes and no, we see some repeat, but there's also different ones all the time. And I think since the first of the year, I think we've issued like, 115 tickets, just in that one location. And the overtime parking, that's one thing, but when they start parking, blocking driveways, and I have a resident come and can't get in the driveway, because that's.
I think it's more of an injury to residents there.
Absolutely, yeah.
No problem on the weekend, hey, Bob, it's just during the business hours of Aris, pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah, I've never had a problem during the weekend. The only thing is, Aris still does get deliveries, you get trucks using that street during the weekend. But if it was parked, no, no, no parking anytime, then that would alleviate, but it is not the residents that are having a problem, it never has been.
I just wouldn't want someone to be ticketed who was visiting a resident on the street because they haven't parked there, that would be a big concern.
No, we take it that extra step, and check to see.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
You have a second?
I thought I did.
Mr. Mayor, the only point I'd like to make on Academy Street is that, and I assume that you would probably make this example anyway, is that we do have emergency responders, especially the ambulance calls to YA, where the car, personal vehicles will be left there while the ambulance is en route to the hospital and return, because of the fact that there is not parking immediately available many times.
I suggest that if you're doing that in Aris, go right up along, on building one, on the side.
Like you said, there's quite a bit of parking right in front of Aris on Maple.
Well, unfortunately, that hasn't been, that hasn't been, that hasn't been acceptable, because of where we had to go pick up patients.
Right.
That may become more acceptable now, because of the fact that we are at least temporarily picking up in a different place, but we were picking up considerably.
Look, are you talking about the upper part of Academy Street, Bob? We're talking just about this.
From Maple, from Maple.
Maple Street down to Lake.
Oh, excuse me, I thought that you were talking about alongside of YA.
No, no, just from Maple Street to Lake.
I was wondering, when you said that, what are they doing up there?
Well, there's no parking signs on the other side of Academy Street as well, so.
Do I have a second to this, no?
Yes, I'd like to second that.
Okay, now, more discussions.
I'm concerned about two to four. You know, we're going to go ahead and change the local law, and maybe we're going to find out that two hours is not enough. I think we ought to be looking at midnight to five, or one to five. I can understand maybe after midnight, you'd want to lock up.
That's fine, whatever.
That concerns me, is that, I'm not going to vote against the, because the overall thing is good, but I am concerned about.
Change it right now.
Yeah, let's change it.
I can amend it to one to five, that's fine. I have no problem.
By five o'clock, usually the guys in the summer are fishing, and they just go.
Yeah, I mean, the police are going to use their own discretion.
I thought it is, it's a tool for the police to park.
Right.
They try to keep some sort of order down there.
I'll make an amendment to one to five.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Beth, we'll get this typed up and sent to our attorney, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
And my last item is, I need to override the mayor to sign the unmet needs agreement for the generators, for the fire station, and for the public works garage. Put that in form of motion.
Motion made, second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Menard, trustee Hockrow.
I'd like to request the executive section to discuss public work personnel.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call, vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. We're going to do this again.
I'd like to request the executive section to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call, vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Dale, can we get an updated water projects?
Sure. Water storage tank bid has been advertised, and bids should be received mid-February, so we should have the recommendation for contract award at your next meeting in February, your second meeting in February. Gary and Doug have not finished their review yet, but any of their comments will be included in a bid, an agenda. John Carr will be in the village on Thursday, and he'll have our copy of the bid documents then. Any questions?
Good news.
Thank you all. That's almost there.
Thank you, trustee Hockrow, trustee Penfield.
My first item concerns the discussion that we had last time about auditing the Justice Department books. I've spoken with Tony regarding the schedule, and she and I will be getting together either at the end of this week or the beginning of next week, so I can do that, and then I should be able to report to you, hopefully, if everything's fine, at our next meeting. The second item I have tonight deals with the grocery store search. I've had phone calls over the past week from a couple of people, wondering what is going on. There is really no new news. From what I understand, Mr. Palmero and the agency dealing with renting the property are working very diligently, trying to get an occupant for the old Grand Union space. Nothing is definite yet, I don't even know that anything, you know, will turn up in the spring, but from what I understand, that they have really been working over the last few weeks, really trying to have an occupant for that space, so hopefully, something will turn up. Our committee has not met recently, but from what I understand, there's still some positive feedback from the packet that we've sent out, but unfortunately, nothing yet to report. I don't know if anyone else has heard anything additionally.
There's three different people that are interested in Grand Union property.
I believe, over the last few weeks, yeah.
Yeah, now, there's another one that's interested.
Yeah.
Couple of them have been back a couple of times, so, of course, rumors are running rampant.
They are.
People are anxious to find out what's going on, so hopefully, we'll have some good news there.
Yeah, but nothing is definite yet, so in spite of what people out there may hear, at least from what I was told this week, it's not, not anything that we can report on yet, so, hopefully, it will be. The next thing I have, I have given you all copies of the work schedules, I met with Doug Ferriss regarding his final schedule for the year for the Lime Crews and the Public Works Department, and one of the things that he and I discussed was how useful this type of schedule can be, and I agree with him, I think that it's something that we should certainly consider again this year. I think it's really useful for me, when I have people who call me and say, hey, you know, what are they doing up on Academy Street, or, you know, what's going on this week, that kind of thing. One of the things that Doug and I discussed was that they really are to be commended for the work, for the schedule that they put forth last spring, and the amount that they were able to accomplish. I know we were really blessed with very good weather, and so, we had a very long season this year, which was very nice. I'd like to ask you all to think about something that we can do to recognize the Public Works Department and the Electrical Department for the work that they have done this year, because they have a very, very visible job, they don't have a water plant that is inspected, or a rec center that people visit, or that sort of thing, but they're really our most visible employees, and they're really always ready when they're called out, lend a hand, they do a wonderful job with the streets and with the electric, so it would be nice if we could think of some way that we could recognize them for that. And I think, you know, perhaps we could come up with something for next time, but I think certainly, I, I do think that the people around the village who drive around and see them out there realize, or perhaps they don't realize, the amount of work that they actually have accomplished, and what they have done this year with that, so, so if you could, maybe, maybe we could think of something. And I know that Doug was also interested in whether or not this would be the kind of thing that we would want to do again this year, so that's something else that we can think about, use them a goal to work toward. The last thing I have involves the planning board, I have done a little bit of research through NICOM, just in terms of what we need to do in order to get this started. The one thing that I wanted to mention tonight is that I think I'd like to ask people out there who are interested in serving on such a board, to please either call the village office, or call one of the trustees, call myself, and let us know, it would be really nice to get a group of people who are interested. I have spoken to some people who have said that, yes, they would think about it. I guess that, from what I've seen in terms of the planning board, that it really is like an advisory board to the board of trustees, where they can basically look at, excuse me, anything from, from planning issues of architecture, to perhaps any change for, of what is a comprehensive plan for the village, that sort of thing, anything having to do with subdivision reviews and those sorts of things, and I think it could be very interesting, I think it's something that's very, very valuable, and it would be very nice to have any people who are interested in serving. I think the idea is to get somewhere between five and seven members, so if you know of anyone who might be interested, or if anyone out there who happens to see this on TV, would give me a call, I would really appreciate it. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, trustee Penfield, trustee Jefferson.
Okay, I had a nice meeting today with Tom and Bobby Clark, the sewer plant, and the project has come along, it's almost complete. The Luck Brothers look to finish the project in the second week of February. The painters have moved into the clarifier area, and they began, they've begun to prime and painting the purlons, and we don't have an updated schedule as of this, as of tonight. Tommy said to me, I guess I was a little quick last week when I announced, or the last meeting, that we would probably be done in February with the paint, it looks like it's going to go on a little bit farther. The other thing I have tonight is the sewer law is still in the hands of Tom Renee, but we had an open forum tonight, but I guess no one was interested in discussing it, so if we don't have any discussion by the members of the board tonight, I'd like to make a move to approve the sewer law. I'd like to make a motion on that, but I'd like to open it up to discussion if we have any other questions.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Well, from my end of this, let me tell you, this is about six, seven years that this, we've been going on with this, and it's finally, finally done. God bless America.
Is this, this is our recommendation from both Doug and Tom, that it's set and ready to go?
Yeah, and then we can go on to the, well, there's significant industrial use permit, but the way George explained it to me tonight is, we have to repeal this sewer law, and then Aris will go ahead with their, they have a problem with the significant industrial use permit, and it's still being drafted by the guys, so they're going to meet with the DEC next week, and finish up with the draft permit. So, the sequence of events is, do I make a motion?
Go through the law first, then we become the permitting agency, once the law is approved, and make an issue about it. There's been a lot of work been put into that law, there's a lot of, a lot of people, YA, their engineering staff, their environmental people, they've been involved in it, the DEC's been involved in it, our engineering, our engineer, and engineering company have been involved in it, it's been a very long and hard progress, but I think it's been very fruitful meetings with everybody, and I'm pleased to see it done. Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm still confused. How are the two related, the significant industrial user permit and sewer law? They're separate?
They're separate items, but they're interconnected. You can't issue a permit till you have a law.
Okay.
So, that's why we're accepting the law tonight.
The permit will come later, I, hopefully, sooner than later, and we're working, they're working on that issue already.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No, so I'll need a second on that.
No, I don't.
Okay, so we're all.
All those in favor, approve by usual sign of aye.
Roll call.
Is this a roll call?
No.
Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. We now have a sewer law. Amen.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had to report today.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson, or, trusty Jefferson. And the confessor, Beth?
No, I don't have anything, other than we are preparing the budget, so, I hope everybody out there is working on their budget sheets to get them into me, so I can pass them along to the budget officer.
What's the actual date on that, Beth?
You have it, it's on there, it could have been in by the 12th.
Well, you didn't get it till, I didn't get it till today.
No, the original ones were that.
I mean, I'm going to say, geez.
They come from you, back to me about the 28th.
28th, same. I talked to Tom about it a little bit tonight.
What, Tom, 14th?
14th.
14th.
14.
Right.
I'm trying.
I guess you are.
Beth, thanks, Beth.
I just like to biddle the church remarks.
Go ahead, your shot, what do you got, Bob?
Anything else? Thank you, nothing else.
Bob? You going to speak for Doug?
The only other thing I have is, you've probably seen me around town, with a measuring wheel and everything, I've been working with the Department of Transportation on the Route 11 upgrade, I'm mapping out the utilities, so far, I've completed the electric, and on Doug's desk is the water and sewer, which he's reviewing, and then all I've left is catch bases.
All right, something. We're going to get blueprints of this?
Yeah, where are they going to be recorded, do you have the box somewhere?
They'll probably be in Bobby's office, and DOT is going to computer generate these for us on a map, so everything will be to scale. We should be in shape.
Well?
I would report that during the calendar year of 2001, we had bird park responded to 400 incidents, and I will have a detailed report for your next meeting.
Thank you, well. Open the meeting to the public at this time, anybody wishing to address the board, make the use of it this time? Anyone wishing to address us at this time, I close?
If nobody else does, then maybe I have some questions.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is it right for me to stand here?
Yeah.
Three points, I guess, talking about the boat ramp parking makes me think of the boat ramp itself, and I'm wondering if it's possible to receive some provision to improve the boat ramp below water surface, in other words, to ensure that the ramp apron is in better shape than it is right now, at its very end, particularly, it's noticeable at low water, that any sizable boat, you're ending up going over some kind of a sill or hollow before you get to the remaining concrete.
We're very aware of that problem, and what causes that problem is that somebody comes down with one of them big cabin cruisers, and they want to put it in the lake, and they don't want to pay to have the lift put it in, so they try to back it down that, and when that heavy trailer goes down, it moves those cement slabs. If they, you know, the thing was never designed to do that.
It also happens to cementing foot boats when the water is at 97 feet.
The, the space has already been made.
Is there any ideas that public work has developed, to see how that space could be filled in?
I'm not sure, I have talked to the regent about it, and it does cause a problem, we know that, how we can anchor it in slabs, I don't know, maybe stay there.
Since it looks so much nicer, since it looks so much nicer now on land, it'd be nice if that could be below water. And also, in terms of the gang plaque going to the new. And also, in terms of the gang plank going to the new floats, if a gang plank, an improved gang plank could be installed.
I thought there was a brand-new one put within floats.
I don't know about the plank reaching to the floats.
You mean the thing going down to the floats? That was all brand-new? If you take a look, that's, it's pile right next to the, the.
Part of the problem is the water's really low, though.
Yes, it is.
You know, it's never been this low, I don't believe it.
And with this kind of a winter, it's going to have, be a problem next year, too, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, the second question is related to, and I've talked with, with the town clerk about it, the new signage that the Town of Champlain has been putting up. Has there been any formal contacts with the Town of Champlain, asking them to modify those signs to clearly identify Village of Rouse's Point Limits?
I could tell you, the superintendent says that the signs are going to be changed. I did notice today that they have the one down on Route Two covered now.
Yeah.
I, I know it's a, we, we, our phone rang off, you can ask the clerk, off the hook down there. Why is it saying, welcome to Champlain, that sign?
It said County Champlain.
No, it didn't.
No, no, it doesn't, no.
But the thing against me is, why, when you go over it overhead, it says, welcome to the Hamburg.
Right.
You know, are we different?
So, would it be useful to put something in writing to them, perhaps?
Well, I had talked into the town superintendent, and he had showed me that it was going to be changed, that's all he said, so I don't know when.
That's all he said to me, too. This is maybe a more delicate question, I don't know if anybody feels comfortable with answering it. Trustee Penfield talked about the, the committee to find a new store, grocery store in that location. From various corners, I get the impression, and the question maybe I should formulate, how would you qualify the cooperation, or degree of cooperation of the current owner in responding to prospective tenants' requests for specific information?
No, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question.
Well, it's my understanding that some people who are interested, it needs more detailed information than the, than the general package provides, such information such as, well, what might be your expected rents on this? Has there been, has that information been easily forthcoming?
I really can't answer that question. I honestly don't know. I think that that is generally something between Mr. Palmero and the prospective tenant. It's really, that's really nothing that has involved our committee, and I'm not sure that we would have any reason to have that information. Have you tried speaking with them, or, I mean, I don't know.
Not yet.
I, I'm not sure. I mean, I, excuse me, I, from what I understand, they are, they are certainly diligently showing the building to people, and I would assume if talks prove fruitful from that, that those prospective tenants would be getting the information that they would need. I really, you know, would have no way of having that information myself, and I don't think that anyone on committee would either.
I'd like to follow up on that, hopefully could, because I've had some contact with, with Mr. Palmero, and, well, it's, I guess it's the son that's in, they're very secretive, and, and I said to him, I said, you know, I'm not just a regular person, just calling because I'm nosy and I'm generally interested, and we're, you know, generally trying to get a, a supermarket in the village. Well, they said they didn't want a lot of rumors going around, and there's a lot of rumors going around, this one's coming, that one's coming, and, you know, so I stepped back a kind of little bit, but, again, people have asked Mr. Palmero to, you know, give me a figure, and let's, you know, so we can get down to see if we can really make any money, and then I don't believe he's, he's been as forthcoming as he should be, from what I mean, I didn't have a direct conversation with him, but there has been questions that have been, you know, well, we'll get back to you, and.
This is the best efforts of the committee, and of the people of Rouse's Point, potentially becomes timely.
Well, it's very true, but.
If the landlord does not respond in a, in a, in a timely fashion.
I would think it would be in his best interest as well to, to have that space occupied as quickly as, as it can be, you know, but ultimately, he's a businessman, we're not. We're a board of trustees who would like to see another store for our community, and, you know, I don't, I think, in a way, I don't want to say that it's not any of the committee's business, but in a way, it really is his business. Do you know what I'm saying? But our goal was to make Rouse's Point as attractive to a prospective tenant as we could, but in terms of, of getting involved with any kind of negotiation between that, that concern and Mr. Palmero, I'm not sure that we have any right really to do that. I, I don't think it's our place necessarily. I don't know, because ultimately.
Well, maybe I will try to have some more conversation with the people on the committee.
Yeah, I just want to say one other thing, too. I mean, because Mr. Palmero is quite a wealthy man, it doesn't seem like there's a big rush to fill this store, and then there's another store in St. Albans that's open also. The Grand Union went out, he said, it has three stores that are open at this time. Now, I don't know what the reason is, it could be a tax, you know, it might be a tax rate off, but when people have money, it's just, you know, it just seems like, you know, things change, so, whether that's good or bad, but for some reason, he doesn't want it, the store hasn't been leased out as quick as it should be.
Yeah, there may, I mean, there could be any number of reasons for that, and it's, it's very hard for us to know. I think that.
No, I think the committee did their work, they done a nice, nice memorial together and.
What you said, it, it was their intent to make it, make Rouse's Point as attractive as it can, and I believe they did that, but you can't get into the leasing, the renting out of the building, that's between the owner and the leasing.
If you looked over the paperwork, there's no reason there's not a store here in town. There's plenty of business, there's plenty of money, there's plenty of traffic through the village. It should be a moneymaker, but it gets back to the same thing. If we put a store here and people don't support the store, it's going to be just like the store, Champlain's having trouble, some of the stores in Plattsburgh are having trouble. If you don't support them, they won't stay here.[1711.91]